Okay, good evening everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall, I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. In typical fashion, as we prepare for this evening's meeting, I'm going to give a brief summary of the agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This evening, the Board does meet in a workshop session. They have a number of items on the agenda. It's Parks and Rec Night, which is really exciting. So, we have a number of presentations and actions here to be presented by Parks and Rec Director Rachel Scott. And so first, on the agenda, we have action to reject all bids for the Centennial Acres and Cole Park Courts Improvement Project. Following that, the Director will present an updated Hodges Heights Park conceptual plan and cost estimate. And then finally, the Director will present a progress report on the very exciting Parks Revitalization Project. So, with all that said, members of the Board are taking their seats here, and we're going to commence with this business of the workshop momentarily. Thank you very much.
I will call to order the Tuesday, April 8, 2025 Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Supervisor Kurtz to lead that.
(Inaudible)
First, on the agenda is an action to appoint a temporary meeting chair. Do we have any appointment motions?
I motion to appoint Supervisor McCormick to be the temporary meeting chair until the reorganization.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
Once again, I will go ahead and say that as the supervisor, the only supervisor sitting here who's been elected, as the supervisor who's been serving the longest here in Lower Paxton Township, on the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors, I feel like I should be the temporary chair until we get our last interim supervisor elected, but I know that that's not going to happen, given how the last couple of votes have gone, but I do want to make that comment on the record.
Any other supervisor comments? All in favor of Supervisor McCormick acting as temporary chair until such time this Board reorganizes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, and I will hand the gavel over to Supervisor McCormick.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. I will note that the Board of Supervisors met in an executive session before the meeting got started this evening. Our first issue on the agenda tonight is internal items and documents, internal, sorry. Get the right. Action, after we have appointed a supervisor, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
I'll keep it brief. Sidewalks are going well, curbs are going well, yard waste isn't going so well, but what I found is, in my neighborhood Colonial Crest, Goose Valley area, they didn't make it on Friday. So people are calling me, and I said, hey, we'll go to Saturday, not a problem, you know, we gotta give them a day. It's the first time out of the chute this year.
They didn't make what, Mr. Miller?
They picking up all the yard waste. And it's something, again, we had dumpsters placed, which was great by you guys, people had trouble using them, and I ended up, I called here five times, twice I got disconnected, I couldn't hear anything was going on, so I called, I left three messages, I didn't get a call back on Friday. So, I found out that according to the people in York, they have an operations center, and they're saying if one of their trucks, they said the truck broke down. So if the truck broke down, their operations center is supposed to call utilities here. And then utilities is to put out what they, and I don't know if this is all true, I'm just giving you all the different angles, that they're supposed to put out a news blast or whatever they call it. And we should just say, hey, because you have the billing, you have all the emails or whatever, I don't know if we have to sign up for that, but people won't be upset if they simply know what's going on. They can make an informed decision, you know, we gotta put the lids back on, it's gonna rain, we don't want it wet. And we didn't get that. And then I had to get this information from York rather than somebody, and again, I had trouble with the phones, easily could be a techno problem again. But I had to go elsewhere, but the information is good because it came from a lady there with almost 20 years of experience. They finally said, hey, talk to this guy, and she was very knowledgeable. So I just don't know if we have to sign up for this question, I thought you had a question. So I'm just saying, you know, if the truck doesn't make it for any reason, is this news blast real? Because, you know, people get antsy when they're spending a lot of money, which I don't think is that much compared to other places right now. But is that really, is that how we're doing it? Because they said, well, I had, in my neighborhood, you know, I have it here, 25 people didn't get picked up. And that's when they came back the second time. And I thought the truck got full, okay, fine, you know, but I still didn't get any comment back on it. And I think it's easier for me to call and just say, I got a lot of people that need picked up, as opposed to 25 people calling the township, times how many over wherever. So, I'm trying to consolidate as I always have, and we have, in my association, we have spokesmen for this, for that, whoever does what, I'm the worker bee, you know, so I don't mind. But how, is there really, my point is this, is there something in place that York is going to call you, and if they, and did they call you, and then does a township even have the ability to put out a blurb? Again, it doesn't have to be site-specific, it just simply has to be, hey, the truck broke down, it's not going to make it to Goose Valley, Colonial Road, Colonial Hills, or whatever. And that's all people really want. They just want to know what they're doing with all their stuff. And the other thing that came out, and I'm not making this up when I talked with the people in York, one of the reasons they have trouble on some of the routes is there's so much stuff. And you know where I'm going with this, a couple times in March, they tried to do this in other municipalities. I'm not saying every week, that was, you know, because it's, weather's ugly, but a week here, a week there, open up the yard waste, and I told them, I would pay extra, just so we can get rid of our stuff. Because a lot of the bags got wet, they picked them up, they're plopping on the ground, and of course, you know, the mentality we have, neighbors are out there that can, they're shoveling up and putting in new bags. But is this really necessary? Should we not expand at least the spring hours? And/or allow people like myself to, you know, haul people's stuff out and take it out to the yard waste? And I also have talked with a lot of people about the yard waste and the noise and the water, and I got some pretty good ideas from people that are, that might be getting long in the tooth, but they've had a lot of experience with the noise and the dust, and I'd be more than glad to share that another time. I just don't have enough information, and I'm over my five minutes, so, thank you.
Bill, if I may, not to prolong the discussion up here, but can I see you after the meeting?
Yeah.
And I'll get specifics from you as far as dates and times, and we'll go through that together.
Yeah, well, it's just, it just was, I mean, it's all recorded, I can show you my phone, but I mean, it's just, I got it all.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Delano Boulevard. First, want to be on record for thanking Jake for sending me an email, don't have a last name, but Jake, in Lower Paxton Township. Second thing, how is litter, do you have a policy on littering in Lower Paxton? When do you go out to collect? Lighters Lane, Rutherford Road, it's terrible. From the high school students, I don't know if they can patrol maybe in the morning, but the trash is just, I think, and not just in, on those two streets, but the township as a whole, if you just drive around and pay attention, there's lots of littering, so is there, are there any initiatives or any policies on, at this time?
Well, I mean, of course, and that's, of course, something that Mr. Miller brings up to us, I think he just brought that to our attention as well, last meeting as well, but in any event, you know, beyond laws that specifically speak to litter, roadside litter and things, we don't have any other formal policy or procedure for that. However, we have been in consultation with our Public Works Department and our Public Engagement Specialist. One of my initiatives that I've been having on my to-do list has been just to actually start some sort of a local, you know, adopt a street program or something similar. It's rarely done, I shouldn't say it's rarely done, it's not as frequently done in municipal government, adopted street, as it is in, along, say, our state roadways, but it is done across the Commonwealth, and we have good models of that, and I think that's something that are, and as a plug, we are at this moment looking for a Public Works Director, so as a plug for that, but that new director will be, that's gonna be one of his or her first projects when they take their seat. So, I think it's a timely comment, and it's something that we're taking a look at.
Maybe consider utilizing the high schools or the school districts, having the high school seniors go out, you could write letters of recommendation for them volunteering to help in some ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
On Colonial Road, my troop, when I was a young lad, 256, they do Colonial Road. So the Boy Scout troops go out, so you have to, you'll make that connection with a Boy Scout troop. It's not the safest road, the way people are driving there now, but nonetheless, they do that. And I did have a couple of people there, actually, when I talked, they're going to the neighborhood. People get a little more proactive, and it's something, maybe on these blurbs you put out, you know, we do have an adopted, we have triangles in my neighborhood, so we have the Adopt a Triangle program, you know, it's usually me, but people want to help, and we hit it. So, it's a good idea, and you just gotta get people that want to do it. Usually, it's young people, Cubs, not Cub Scouts so much unless they're interior streets, but Lighters Lane is a, I just drove that again the other day, checking a couple things out, where they're gonna do the sidewalks at the Sunny Hill Farms. So, it's something to think about, but there are volunteer organizations out there. Or get some vests, and you just get out there once in a while with some neighbors. You can knock a whole lot out with a few people at one time, you know, one, two people can do what one person does a fraction of the time, so, but it's not a bad idea.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Albert Banks, on Lighters Lane. I have two issues primarily. Over the weekend, I noticed the compost area was open from the park side, and was open all weekend. I don't think there were any, there was any work being done, but the compost was exposed, the gate was wide open, and anyone could go in it. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, if you're, have staff at all to be diligent about closing and locking it. It wasn't locked or closed this weekend. And I just forgot my other point, but we're planning to have a meeting to involve the township in May. We would like to have a meeting to involve the township in May. You already mentioned, and I guess it's known, that the Public Works Director is no longer here, or not available, or he's on limited time, or something. So by May, I don't know if there will be a Public Works Director. So, we would like to have a meeting to involve the Public Works Director and/or appropriate people from that staff to meet with DEP and anyone from HRG. And I'd like to have the meeting, if at all possible, in the township Hodges Heights Park, to overlook the operations of Hodges Heights, or excuse me, of the compost area. I think by that time, the application that the township has submitted to DEP for consideration to maintain the compost operations there should have been determined by the middle or end of May, and I'd like to have a meeting to talk about how it's operating. It's my understanding that the township has now at least one contract that goes beyond servicing residents' waste in the compost facility, it's extended to Hanover Township. And to that extent, you've expanded facilities of sorts, piles of debris is being farmed all over the compost area, from the one gate on, close to Kendall Oaks, to the area near where the park is. So there's now a more extensive area for disposal of, and storage of whatever the debris is, because some of it seems to be rock and stone, and others seem to be yard waste that the compost facility wants managed. So, I'd like to put my plea out to the committee to think about a staff or staff persons essential to such a discussion with the members of Hodges Heights and DEP, Region 3, to meet with us to talk about the operations. Thank you.
If I may, sir, is that something that you're mentioning, that you had already made contact with DEP to arrange, or is that something you'd like, okay, all right, just, thank you.
Other public comments? Seeing none, do we have comments from the members of the Board?
I have a comment regarding Hodges Heights. We've been waiting for several months. Mr. Gottschall, where are we with the compost consultant report? Because I would like that put on the agenda, so that could be, that could help us prepare for the meeting that Mr. Banks would like to have with DEP and Lower Paxton Township. That information, I believe, would be relevant. I know we've been waiting since December, I've checked in in January, I've checked in in February, I've checked in in March, and now here we are in April. So, I really, could you go ahead and tell us where we are with getting the results of that report, actually, the two reports?
Sure, Supervisor Thompson, the, so at this time, there was only the one report that was being conducted. We, the township still has actively a grant request into DCED, Pennsylvania DCED, for the, you know, second phase of that, that report, so a second report. You know, I think Mr. Miller has attempted to reach out, actually, to DCED, I think, as late as today, to get an update on that grant. I believe the federal budget may be a question as to the timing of the DCED grant award. So that second report, we're still, you know, waiting, waiting on to even place a contractor to begin doing the work. As relates to the first report, that, you caught me off guard tonight in terms of the question. Director Knoll, that was Director Knoll's project, and of course, he, you know, has been a bit distracted lately in moving on, and so I'll just simply have to get back to you on that one. Last I heard from him on that report, which was now probably a month ago, which was probably the last time you had received an update as well, we were still waiting on the contractor to, you know, formally get back to us on the additional comments that we had, to give us a final completed report back. But at this point, I know we have the draft, it's been circulated to staff, and I think we're just waiting on that kind of final review on the contractor's end, to get it back to us in final form.
So, Director Knoll has a copy of the draft?
Yes, yes, we have a copy of the draft, and like I said, it's, you know, I think, you know, it was just in kind of editing phase with the contractor until we received the final report.
Okay, could I get a copy of the draft, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
And just, if I may, just to, I don't want to prolong this anymore as well, but it may have been just a little unclear there. Director Knoll, of course, now has been with the township now nine years, he's served the last three years as Public Work Director, Public Works Director, and, I mean, he excelled in that position, bringing the department really to the point where we are a very high-functioning organization within the Public Works Department, using technology, data. Of course, Tim Knoll, the Director, as an engineer by education and trade, used his skill set as an engineer to, you know, save the township countless thousands of dollars in terms of engineer review on various contracts, not only in Public Works Department, but in parks and sewer and beyond. And so we're going to be sad to see him go. He has, for the last number of years, been consulting on the side, in his area of expertise. He is a native and a current resident of Lancaster County, and so about an hour drive each day, and fortunately for him, his side consulting business has picked up to the degree that he now is going to be moving into the private sector full-time to focus on that venture, and kudos to him, and hope he does well. But it's our loss, and we're quickly attempting to get that position filled, but hopefully we do so soon, and on to the next tenure.
We will miss him. He was very helpful to me, very supportive in the things that I was trying to do over at Hodges Heights. But he's not gone completely. He has assured me of that.
Do we have other Board comments? Next item on the agenda is action to reject all bids for the Centennial Acres and Cole Park Improvements.
Good evening, Board members. Rachel Scott, Parks and Recreation Director. I come to you today to recommend rejecting the single bid that we received for the Cole and Centennial Court renovation. Although the project was publicly advertised, and a pre-bid meeting was held, we received only one formal bid by submission deadline. Following the deadline, staff contacted the other firms that attended the pre-bid meeting, and these companies indicated that they were still interested in the project, but were unable to submit a bid at this time. Several expressed that they would be likely to participate if the bid would be issued in the fall. So given that additional competitive interest in an anticipated future bid cycle, and the interest in ensuring a fair competitive procurement process, we are recommending to reject the current bid and plan to rebid the project in the fall.
Any questions? Any questions for Director Scott?
Director Scott, was there something wrong with our bid process? Was there something wrong with the way that we worded it?
No, the spring was a busy season for a lot of the contractors, so it just didn't work well for them this year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can I just ask a question? How long will this delay the project? Was the anticipated timeframe for it to start this summer?
It was supposed to start June and be completed by the end of July. We're looking at pushing it to August 1st to start construction, and then have it completed by October.
Thank you.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
One question. The first timeline was one month, June to July?
I apologize, then it should have been in May, that it would start, the end of May.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to reject all bids for the Centennial Acres and Cole Park Courts Improvement Project, so that we can rebid.
Perfect. Second?
We have a motion probably made in seconds, reject all bids, all in favor of Section 5 by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of updated Hodges Heights Park that we want to do. Director Scott?
Here we are again. So in December, the Board of Supervisors presented a, oh, wrong plan, sorry.
Do you want to take control, or are you taking control?
I don't know what I'm doing. It has the next presentation up, I don't...
What do you want to see here?
If we can just see that map, that would be great, thank you. Can we show that map, please? Thank you. A little easier to read. In December, the Board of Supervisors had a first plan, conceptual plan, that was presented to the public for the first time, and we received some feedback, and we brought the community into a meeting in March. We continued to have additional feedback from them, and we anticipated having this new plan here, and so on April 2nd, it was presented to the Parks and Recreation Board with the updates that had changed from the previous plan. So, we are pretty excited about this. It has been a great compromise between the community, the Parks and Rec Department, and what we can do on that site considering the conditions. Some of the feedback that we received from the residents was that they wanted to ensure there was additional parking. Initially, it had seven, we now have 11. Minding this is only a two-acre park, so 11 parking spaces does provide adequate space there. We also included a bike rack for the neighborhood that wanted to ride their bikes there, they would have a place to station them. We rotated the park entrance and with the pavilion, putting it closer to the parking lot, so that way there would be easier access when bringing your annual pickings. lot, so that way there would be easier access when bringing your annual picnic activities. Additional feedback we received was that though this is a passive park, they wanted to have more assistance with imaginative play. It was suggested to have musical instruments that were not into the foundation, we were able to do so. So this would include a few musical instruments, a four-square or hopscotch in an open area. And then there would still be the plaque of honoring Hodges Heights here in this area. So this would all be ADA accessible as well. The other addition we added, I forgot to add, was a fence line from the compost that would have a mesh screen blocking the, the compost. So that serves dual purpose to create a visual separation, but also potentially some of the debris from the rocks kicking up from the trucks. So this plan I present to you today is, I believe, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand and eighty, five hundred and seventy-seven eighty-three thousand dollars. Yes.
So was that that, what, March meeting?
Correct.
Didn't we make some changes to the pavilions?
We did. We, um, the original plan only had a two-seater pavilion, two picnic tables. As you see here, it was highly recommended to have the six that they currently have. So it has a four and a two, but they put a sun, sun shade sail between the two to allow for additional shade between the structures. So it will allow for more seating.
Okay, and where are we with the grills?
Having grills there? We do currently have one and we would look to have another in there as well.
All right. And with respect to the, um, did we shift the restroom facilities?
Yep, that is located towards the handicap parking spot.
Okay.
So we placed that in the parking area. It was originally up in the far right corner.
Okay. One other question.
That's okay.
Well, I'm not.
Keep going.
So there was some objection to the entrance being on the opposite side of the park. There was a gate. Do you recall?
I don't recall a gate. There was some concerns because the, the entrance was there, the pavilion was at that end, so it just seemed very inviting to, to make that the main entrance. The neighborhood is in that area, so that's why we are having an entrance there off of the, the sidewalk and the houses that come from that angle.
Are you talking about from Conway?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I, I thought that I, I'm remembering that there was some discussion about having to pull all the picnic supplies all the way across the park.
Originally, the pavilion was located at the top right corner, but they pulled it down towards the parking lot so that it'd be convenient to transport your, your picnic.
Supplies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So looking at the funding for this, I am looking to apply, probably in the next couple weeks I'll be back asking for, for the C F A grant. That grant provides up to 250,000. It's a 85-15 split, so we would receive 85% and only have to match 15%. We are looking at additional ways to support this as well through other funds, so I'm going to refer that one to Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Director Scott. As was discussed at the Hodges Heights meeting with Parks and Recreation, both in March and here in April, Community Development Block, Block Grant, the township is a direct recipient of those funds, starting in fiscal year 23-24. And while this park itself is not in what's designated as an L M I, a low to moderate income area, as you can see versus the conditions of the park now, this greatly adds to the ability for accessibility. So it takes away those barriers, keeping those with, with ADA access concerns. So a good portion, not all, but a good portion of the costs associated with the park can be deemed qualifiable based on ADA certification. Now, not all would be, and that's where the complement of the grant funds really comes into place with that. And again, when we look at such things as a parking area, we need to be very cautious about what is pure pave versus non-pave as far as what does qualify under the rules and regulations as ADA. So it's a very careful walk, but as far as the interior walkways, the connections, the pavilions, those will all be ADA qualifiable, which opens up those funding streams that we have accessible in a quicker standpoint. However, as was discussed at the Park and Rec meetings, there are environmental studies to be done, planning, permitting, et cetera, which does buy us a little bit of time with the grant request cycle to get things ready and prepared, but enable us to be able to start to evaluate the C D B G funding and get that process moving timely.
So currently, there is a big, black hose in the middle of the park. Do you know what, what I'm talking about? What is the plan for that?
It's the, um, guess, it would stay and we have no power to move that.
Yeah, we can, maybe we can, we can spruce it up maybe with some plantings around it or something, but yeah, unfortunately that has to stay.
Does it have to be that big? Because the ones that I've seen are much, much smaller. So I didn't understand why in the middle of a park.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Are you following me?
I am.
You know where I'm going with this? So go ahead and answer the question.
Well, there, there are various ports and wells and gantries and, and all dotting that, that whole facility and, and each are specific for a reason. So I, that, I, I will not pretend to, to speak to any form of confidence, with any form of confidence in talking about what specific port that is or why it's needed so large. But I, we will certainly take a look at, at how big the opening is and if we can, we can certainly make that part of the, the project to reduce the size of it, or at least spruce it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yeah.
And for, for the individuals that have not been on the board for a long time, I just want to make myself clear. Residents have been involved in this process, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this plan is generally acceptable to them?
Yes, we met with Park and Rec Board, which was in a public meeting. I had made an invite to one of the residents of Hodges Heights. He was able to attend. Mr. Banks was able to attend. He brought the information back to a community meeting the next day. And though they felt they were poised to have a compromise on this park. Is that correct? Not to put you on the spot, but thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Other questions or comments on this presentation?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just while we're on the subject of compost adjacent here, I did get a, I did receive a, an email from Director Knoll, he must be watching at home, hello, Tim, that over the weekend, he did receive an update from our consultant on the compost study project, actually stating that the consultant is actually awaiting comments back from D E P. So that's where we are at this moment, awaiting comments by D E P. So.
Thank you, Tim.
Next item on the agenda is presentation of the Parks Revitalization Project.
Fun doesn't end. Here we go. Mr. Getchell had asked me to come present to you what is happening in Parks and Recreation. And so we had discussed that we had started the revitalization plan in 2022 and thought it might be appropriate to bring you guys up to speed as to what has been transpiring over the last three to five, or three years with a plan of five-year goal to move forward with the different updates through the parks. So our first agenda item was to create a master plan and that was the number one thing we did in 2022. We assessed all 16 parks and evaluated what amenities were in them and throughout the different regions of the, the township. From there, we had a $5 million pot of money, so to say, from the sale of Wolfersberger Park and ARPA funds that were available. So we wanted to find the ways to stretch that funds at all possible abilities. So we applied through different grant funding sources to, to stretch that. And so I'm just going to go through each park at a pretty fast pace, but just kind of give you some updates as to what's been transpiring through each park. Brightville Park is our 27-acre community park. We upgraded the playground, the basketball court, the restrooms. We renovated the tennis to include eight pickleball courts. We worked with Heroes Grove Committee to install the welcome center. We updated Santana Fence and we added cameras to that park. And that was all, has all been completed to date. So within the three years, we were able to do that. At Centennial Acres, a four-and-a-half acre neighborhood park, we upgraded the playground. We worked with an Eagle Scout to install a Gaga ball pit. We worked with the Penn State Extension to install a live steak nursery along the trail. And we are planning in the fall, as you just noticed, to update the basketball courts.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Are we going to be doing any landscaping over at Centennial? When I, when I, I'm asking because when I visited there, it looked like, um, the pla, I don't know if it's plastic, but it looked like the underlayer was coming up.
Of what's, what part of the?
What part of the park?
Like the playground or?
On, on the bank. So we'll talk about that.
Let me check that out and I will certainly, we do work with Penn State Extension. There is a group that comes and volunteers on a regular basis to help public work staff maintain that. They also take care of the rain guard in there as well, and I know that needs to be spruced up, so. Forest Hills, we renovated the basketball and tennis court, added a two-pavilion picnic area and made it ADA accessible. George Park, we have connected the pavement to, or the paved path to Lamplight Park. We renovated the hockey court. We have submitted a grant for a community hub for basketball, pickleball, and volleyball. We have installed cameras and this summer, we are working on reimagining Possibility Place. So we will be working with the steering committee to design a new playground and then go for the community efforts to re, to fund that project as it was installed in 2007, it was. Hodges Heights, we did just go over that, so I won't continue, but I am looking to submit grant applications to have that park be fulfilled in the next two to three years. Kings Crossing, we updated the playground and we repaired the roof of the pavilion. At Cole Park, as mentioned, we are looking to renovate the tennis, handball, and basketball court this fall. We are also, which is in that section, we are also looking to expand the dog park by taking into consideration a third section in this area and enhancing it with features dog-friendly. So we are working on that and we added cameras to that park.
Does that park have a dedicated dog playground, so to speak?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, it is just a fenced-in area. There's not many play activities for the dog, it's just a safe place for them to go. There is a small portion right here for small dogs and the large is this area. So we're looking to add a third so we could rotate it because the ground gets extremely muddy and we can never get the grass to repair because it is used so heavily.
Is that our only park that has a dog park?
It is. When we went through the master plan, the national standards were, for a township this size, 53,000, was to have one large community dog park. So that's where we were looking to enhance. Coons Park, I'm in the process of preparing a master plan right now. This is a unique park in that we have six organizations that all strongly support the maintenance of this park. So they prepare, help with the renovation of the dugouts, the fences, the pool, as you're familiar with, the football stadium there. So I have to work with each of those organizations to not impact them too much, but we've been working with them to create a master plan for the future to redevelop the playground area. It's currently behind this tree. And then the volleyball courts, we run a, our own league on it and that, those courts are going to need to be redone. So we're working through that and then adding walking paths throughout the entire park, as you see here. We've also added cameras there and then with the organizations, we have replaced all the fencing around the ball fields. At Lamplight Park, this five-and-a-half acre neighborhood park, we have paved a walking path along the perimeter, connecting it to George Park. We've made it ADA accessible, including the grill, and then we have replaced the playground. At Langle Park, we have installed a cricket pitch, a turf cricket pitch that is used seven days a week by two organizations. I have applied for grant funding for the six pickleball and I'm anticipating in April to find out if we have been awarded for that. And then the pavilion, we have a good partnership with Dauphin County Vo-Tech and so the students will come over and help do the labor for some of our basic needs. So this is where they repaired the roof of the pavilion. Meadow Brook is a small one-and-a-half acre park that's nestled in between all these homes. We do have plans in the next year to install a new playground area for them.
What community is that in?
Mayfair, just behind Mayfair.
Off of Devonshire?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Stray Winds, we are working this summer to expand the walking path along the perimeter of this park and make it ADA accessible. There's not a walking, uh, walking cross over Macintosh, can't cut that out. So we're looking to have a, it be ADA accessible from Macintosh Road to the pavilion and then also put a perimeter walking path around the park and expand the playground as there as well. And if that's not enough fun, we are looking to take ownership of Autumn Oaks Park, which is a 27-acre park off of Patton Road. Blue Ridge Park, which will be a 32-acre park off of Alexander Way. And then we have conducted a master plan for the Conway Track, which was a mile from Hodges Height, which provides the activities that we were not able to have at Hodges Heights due to the, the ground level there. So we are certainly working on parks. And that is everything.
Questions or comments for Director Scott?
I, I just have one comment. Director Scott and the Parks Department and the Board, you are heroes to my children. They are two and seven and not last weekend, the prior weekend where it was 70 degrees. We visited Forest Hills, Centennial Acres, and Brightville all in one day. Brightville is absolutely amazing to have those two separate areas for toddlers and older kids and they thought it was perfect. So it's very exciting to see. see all of the work that's going into the parks, and thank you so much. And they all look great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Scott, I'll just add that it was a great presentation. Thank you. Kudos to you and your staff, and a great deal of appreciation from all the members of the board for the work your folks do.
Thank you.
It's greatly appreciated. Maybe not often enough spoke about in public, but greatly appreciated. We truly do have a great park system in Lower Paxton Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I also have to mention, I mean, all of this in three years, right? About three years. And at the same time, as the director and the department are continuing and actually growing the exceptional programming, the daily programming. So not only all this capital work, but tremendous daily programming that continues and continues to grow year by year. So that's pretty awesome. And it's a lot, it has a lot to do with the kind of forward-thinking look of the previous and this board in terms of creating the Parks Master Plan, as well as then having the forethought to launch into this five-plus-million-dollar revitalization project. So it's really awesome.
One of the things that makes Lower Paxton Township what a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any announcements?
I would like to make an announcement. So next week is Local Government Week for townships from April 14th to April 18th, and we will be doing and presenting some special things here at our boss meeting. Isn't that correct, Manager Gatchell?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
There's a comment on the floor.
Please.
I just wanted to go on record. I'm not happy with the two- or three-year time span that was proposed for the Hodges Heights Park. It's been 50 years. You're doing revitalization for George and the others. I just wanted to go on record. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
We have a motion properly made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening.